Hey, we've got thirty seconds. All right, ten seconds. Stand by. And we're ready.
Okay, well, it is six o'clock Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, and I will call this City of Lacey Work Session Two Quarter. Mayor Ryder is absent, he's absent tonight, but all other council members are present. And next on our agenda, we're gonna take, read our land acknowledgement. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Squali Tribe and Saxon Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people who not recognized today, who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. And with that, I am seeking approval of our agenda. So can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as promised.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. And let's get into our agenda. First, before we do, City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. It's an exciting night because we've got a lot of information to share with the City Council regarding our parks programs and where we are going in the future with some of our park properties and expansion of those facilities. We broke the topics up into two different focus areas. The first, we'll be talking about Regional Athletic Complex Phase Three Design Concept. What we'll do is go through kind of a background of our current operations, expenditures, and then kind of the community feedback or priorities, and then start looking at what are some opportunities we could look at for Phase Three with a staff recommendation? And then what that cost mechanism would look like with the Public Facilities District, with the extension we're able to complete, thanks to some legislation that extended our current capital area PFD, our Public Facilities District. And again, I want to just initially start off by recognizing Jen and Troy and Jamie and Jenny Wilson behind Jen, and a whole host of others and staff that try to pull this information for council to kind of get this information to start giving staff some direction on where to go forward with the focus of Phase Three Designer of the Rack. So I'll kick it over to Jen now, and then I'll do the little intro for the second item, which is to look at our overall parks program, expansion, and priorities, and how we find those. But let's jump into the Rack Phase Three. And I know Jen's gonna lead off with some of the background and focus.
Great. Well, thank you, Rick. Perfect. So thank you for taking care of introductions as well. I was gonna do the same thing, so. Thanks, Jenny. All right, so yes, here to talk about the Regional Athletic Complex Phase Three. And we'll start out with, hopefully everybody can see that, the community feedback and interest. So as council knows, extensive outreach was done in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two for the comprehensive plan update. And that information also informed the two thousand twenty-three Rack Financial Plan that came before you. Both items actually came before council in August of two thousand twenty-three. And so in there, in the financial plan, there is a section regarding the expansion or Phase Three section. And notes that Phase Three offers a potential for additional athletic fields and commercial partnership that would provide sports and wellness opportunities to the community. The Comp Plan identifies the Lacey Park System as only being thirty-five percent developed and prioritizes the need for additional athletic fields. Development of Phase Three would give community sports user groups access to more of Lacey's Park System and help with identified athletic field shortages. It's really important, and as I have indicated on the slide here, to acknowledge that there are two different types of stakeholders, the general community and then sports user group stakeholders. So those are two different types of users. I think we can all agree on that. So it's interesting, the feedback to get from those two different stakeholders when asked preferred location for increased access to sports fields, whether that's converting a current, you know, natural grass field over to synthetic or adding fields, the general public answered both Rainier Vista Park and the Rack. And soccer was identified as the highest need for additional field access. But when you ask the sports user groups directly, the frequent users of our system, the preferred location was the Rack and the preferred use is fast pitch and softball and baseball focus as the highest need for additional field access. When the general community was asked if they've ever been turned away for field use due to the fields already being full, eighty percent said no, twenty percent said yes. And that makes sense because they're not using the sports fields as specifically as the sports user groups who answered. Thirty-six percent said, no, they haven't been turned away because the fields are full. And sixty-four percent said, yes, they have, because the fields are full. So other key takeaways from the outreach is that the general community is the most interested in increased trails and walking opportunities and that sports user group stakeholders are the most interested in the city completing the sports fields in the spaces that the city already has sports space. So for example, the Rack, obviously, Phase Three is one of those, and the other is Meridian Park in northeast Lacey. So we've got lots of kiddos and families traveling across town for practices. In addition to our, you know, consistent or repeat sports user groups, we've also heard directly from sports stakeholders such as Wood Bat League, a premier soccer team, and then also lots of indoor requests from tennis, pickleball, and even semi-pro basketball developers and leagues. You know, over the past six years, as these discussions have been going, these are the groups that are reaching out. So let's talk about programming considerations. So the staff that I haven't quite mentioned yet, or the stakeholders rather, I haven't mentioned, are the staff who actually get the field requests and book the complex. And I think we talked about, we talked about this before when we went through the Rack Financial Plan, but the report from staff is that the current fast pitch and baseball complex at the Rack, approximately fifty percent of tournament requests are getting turned away because of not enough space. And that side of the complex is booked every weekend. And then with a lot of, you know, community use in between those weekends. The weekends, meaning they draw more of that regional tournament. We also have local groups that have tournaments on the weekends. So of course, the challenge here is combining and balancing the sports stakeholders with the community need and taking into account what staff is reporting, and then also the top priorities from the public, both the sports stakeholders and the general community. So the next few slides, I'm gonna show concept for three different options. And I'll be discussing the advantages and disadvantages and who would be served with these different options. And at the presentation, we will be asking council to weigh in through a mentee pool. So be sure to have your phones handy or your tablet, whichever device you'd like to use. And we have handed out the link, so we'll let you know when that time comes. But I just wanted to make sure and give you a heads up. And I just want you to know, too, that the concepts are very rough concepts in that we basically like took a couple of builds and pasted them on. So there's no parking lots or concession buildings or any other site development type things on these slides. So option number one, I'll orient you here. So this is the Phase Three property, which is just slightly under twenty-six acres. It is across Marvin to the west from the current Regional Athletic Complex. Here's Stillcombe Road to the north. And in option one, it's a fast pitch baseball softball focus. And so the advantages of this scenario, this is the type of space where we turn the most users away. It replaces the fields that some of you, many of you, most of you will recall the Bucknell builds that went offline, that were in the immediate area just down Marvin Road a little bit. They closed at the end of two thousand fifteen, so that was nine years ago now, hard to believe. But those fields were taken offline. The, in addition, the Thurston County Little League is having challenges. They did come to us to talk about potential future use options. So they're having challenges with their, they have seven youth baseball fields currently at the Port of Olympia Space in Tumwater. They have gotten an extension for that use, but there could be potential, you know, issues in the future.
That extension's only, what, three years? We have to be off that property.
I believe it's four years.
Four years.
Yep. The, this option provides and enhances the ability to host larger tournaments. So what tournaments directors are looking for is same site, multiple fields, same surfacing. So if we can match the, you know, the surfacing that's at the current Rack Baseball Complex with what goes in here, it makes us more marketable when we go out to bid for tournaments and meet with tournament directors and work really closely with the VCB to try to attract those tournaments in. And so that just makes us like more marketable. And I think I mentioned earlier, we're turning away the fifty percent of the tournament requests. So this would just enhance our ability to attract tournaments. We would also have the ability to include a championship level field. So that's why this is, this is essentially Field Five at the Rack, paste it on here. But that, the Wood Bat League has a proven model for success in Ridgefield, Washington, and has been something that's been discussed for a really long time in Lacey. And so that's something that we could attract here. The advantages with the Wood Bat League, and basically that's collegiate level players in their offseason, so during the summer, playing for different community teams. And the community hosts the players to stay at their house. And so it kind of enhances that community draw into these types of events. So it also could be a level playing field that the local college teams could play. So that would help them. Also, for economic development, we know that the VCB reports fifteen million dollars in direct economic impact to the area because of the current Rack. And so theoretically, that number could rise if we're attracting more people in. In addition, this type of a field with a seating arrangement that could be made would be a great venue to host concerts and other community events. Also, all turf areas could be used for soccer, lacrosse, rugby, and other sports besides baseball and softball. So although focused on fast pitch and baseball, these would be multipurpose all-year fields, just like the ones currently are at the Rack. And there is potential to partner with local businesses, you know, for teams, concessions, merch, potentially other private representation that could come along with this scenario. We couldn't think of any disadvantages for this option. As to who has served the general community, if, you know, there's some sensitive areas and there is an oak stand over on this side. So the hope would be to have like a walking trail through the site and no different than the current Rack is used for, you know, a lot of walkers and the general community. But also, the general community would be served with potential community concerts and events. And then who else would be served is youth and adult fast pitch, youth and adult baseball, youth soccer, and all the other sports that I mentioned. The capital and M and O estimates, which are included in the Parks Capital Improvement Program of the Comp Plan, we believe would be two point one million dollars for planning and design and just over ten million dollars in construction. And that's where the twelve million dollar figure comes in. And again, this doesn't show, you know, the other things that would be on the site, such as parking in storm water, restrooms, concessions, building, you know, trails, potentially a playground, et cetera.
But those aren't included in the cost?
Yes, yeah. For M and O, maintenance and operation per year, we have an estimate of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This includes two full-time employees plus two seasonals and minimal equipment due to the sharing of equipment that can happen with the current Rack. And of course, lifecycle replacements, for example, turf field replacements would need to be considered and budgeted for. Option two has a soccer focus. And again, we really just copied the fields from the other side, except for, with the exception of this is a championship level field. So the advantages of a soccer focus are that synthetic turf fields with lights are advantageous community-wide and frankly county-wide since they can be used year-round rather than just seasonally. In this scenario, a championship field could accommodate a USL caliber soccer team, could help local college teams, it could provide the same type of economic development that I talked about with option number one, and then, you know, provide more things to do in Lacey. In addition, similar to option one, this field could allow ability to host concerts and other community events, although the South Sound Field by North, that's right, by North Hurst High School, you know, is a similar type of a field that's already in the community. Also, similar to option one, the potential exists to partner with local businesses for concessions, merch, and other types of opportunities. Disadvantages are that we wouldn't be able to capitalize on the biggest need, which is turning the fast pitch and the baseball tournaments away. We also do already have a robust soccer inventory throughout the Lacey community between city fields and school district fields, like during the busiest season. We do need more soccer fields in the community, but the greatest location need is at Meridian Park. There's two fields in the master plan for that space. And also the current Rack, so we would really like to be able to convert one or more, or excuse me, one more of the grass fields at the current Rack to synthetic turf with lights. And I'll show you that on a slide later with the recommendation.
You want questions later or no?
Um, it's fine, either way.
Does this price tag include those bleachers?
So we would have to, the next step would have to be, once an option is focused on to move forward with, we'd have to really dive into the cost. This is an estimate, high-level estimate.
It would be that particular layout, because that's just a thinking example, what it would look like in a footprint. But you'd have to go through design and it'd be something that would have to stay within that twelve million dollar price range.
Gotcha.
Yep. So as far as who is served with the soccer focus, the, you know, similar to option one, the general community with the walking trail, community events, youth and adult soccer, lacrosse, football, ultimate frisbee, and any other sports that can happen on a soccer-type field. There's a lot more, like, you know, we've seen footage and ultimate frisbee, lots of different things. But for the estimate, we do think it would be very similar to option one, you know, with the two point one million for planning and design and approximately ten million for construction. Of course, would need parking, storm water, restrooms, concessions, everything that I mentioned before, trails, potential playground. So for M and O, very similar, three hundred fifty thousand a year. That does include the two FTEs and two seasonals. And then, of course, again, lifecycle replacements would need to be considered.
Okay, that's. Don't get mad at me for asking this.
I won't get mad.
Is there a hybrid option?
Oh, I do have a recommendation.
You do?
Yeah.
Good.
At the end, so maybe we'll hold off on that one. So option three is an indoor sports facility focus. And so, as many, if not all of you know, we hired Hyundai Strategic Partners back in two thousand eighteen, and they conducted a two-phase feasibility study, which showed the need, definite need for an indoor facility, sports facility in Lacey. And part of their phase two of their process was to review the top four sites that could be located. And the Rack Phase Three was one of those four sites. The conclusions and recommendations of that study did not show the Rack Phase Three as the recommended location, but rather Quaymuth as a recommended location with the most feasible path forward, including a partnership with the Nisqually Indian Tribe. The advantages of this scenario are that, this focus are that it's definitely needed. In Lacey, it would attract tournaments on the weekends and could be used by the community during the week, no different than the way the Rack is used. The public does want indoor recreation opportunities. And of course, the health and wellness benefits of this type of activity are extremely important. And there's also lots of partnership opportunities for this. One pretty big disadvantage is the cost, both the capital and the maintenance and operations. So you can see in two thousand eighteen, it was estimated twenty-two point three million for the base scenario of the indoor sports facility. And that's the eight courts, eight courts of flat court sports. And so with a four percent escalation each year, in today's dollars, it would be approximately twenty-eight million dollars to build. With the M and O being in two thousand eighteen was one point two million a year. And then with a two percent per year escalation, it's one point four million in two thousand twenty-four dollars. So it would be like having another full Rack operation for maintenance and operations. And then, of course, the lifecycle replacements that go with a building like this, such as the HVAC system, roofing, court servicing, et cetera. But who is served in this scenario? The general community with the outdoor walking trail and some community events, of course, and all flat court sports user groups, basketball, pickleball, volleyball, wrestling, cheer, some soccer, some softball, both youth and adults, potentially Boys and Girls Club as a stakeholder. So they were, had a lot of interest at the time we did the feasibility studies. Although since that time, they do have a second location in Lacey at the Armack, which is by North Hurst High School. So, you know, would have to circle back, of course. A couple more thoughts on this one. Knowing that an indoor sports facility is a need in our community, it is listed in the Parks Capital Improvement Program as a partnership opportunity, and you'll see this in the next presentation. And then as council does know, the Nisqually Indian Tribe has expressed an interest in including an indoor sports facility in their development plans. But of course, nothing's been solidified, and that's, of course, a decision to be made at a future date. Just of note. So now I'm gonna pass the presentation over to Troy for some financial considerations.
Thanks, Jen. Jen's letting me present the easy slides tonight. So, you know, Jen talked about capital, M and O, lifecycle replacements. So I want to provide, obviously, the financial data behind that, kind of sprinkle in what's happening now to give you a picture and give you an idea of some of the challenges we have in the current operation, which will likely carry into the expansion going forward as well. So here are the preliminary results of the two thousand and three expenditures for the Rack. I broke it up into the two different sections, operations and maintenance. Operations is the scheduling, the booking of the facility itself. And maintenance is, you know, taking care of the fields, paying the electric bill, that type of thing. So in operations, of that two hundred and seven thousand, about three-quarters of that is labor. So about a hundred and sixty is labor. On the maintenance side, it's only about fifty percent labor, so about six hundred thousand. We have another twenty-five percent of that number being utilities, water, electricity are the big ones. On the other side of the ledger, these are the revenues and how they came in in two thousand twenty-three. You know, you've had presentations in the past. This is a heavily subsidized operation. So about sixty percent of the Rack funding comes from transfers in, comes from the lodging tax dollars, as well as we're using two hundred thousand a year from the Public Facility District Sales Tax. So about nine hundred and sixty-six thousand last year, again, about sixty percent. We do see in the dark green that are, that's the program revenues for the Rack. We actually had a good year. We brought in probably about a hundred and sixty thousand more than we had budgeted. That's all from sports, obviously. So league fees was a, was a pretty big jump, about a hundred and twenty thousand from the previous year. So the Rack did have a good year. That's, you know, all to say we're still heavily subsidizing this. You might remember during the, you know, the Rack Financial Plan, when I talked about the council really had the power here. If you could add weeks to the calendar, we could expand those revenues. I mean, we're booked, as you heard, Jen said, we're booked every single weekend. So that's really a limitation, as well as kind of how many fields we have available.
Troy, how much of the, the, how much of the budget is general fund dollars?
For two thousand twenty-three, it was that five hundred and eighty-six.
That's, that's the general, okay.
Yeah, so that's actually reducing in two thousand twenty-four. You might remember, we found some reserves to apply to that. So in terms of the operating fund itself, that's, it's being reduced. But there's also a little bit of capital in that number as well. We put sixty thousand in the budget for, to pay for a warranty service for the lights, just because we're, we're in, you know, bad need of needing to upgrade and replace those lights, but we're kind of in between funding at this point, so we extended the warranty instead.
Accent on the reserve piece, too, you know, that's not general fund annual, but that's reserved dollars that could be used for other priorities or be used for annual expenses in this case, too. So.
Are we booked every weekend, or is it the nice, warm, sunny weekends?
In the baseball, softball side of the complex, every weekend, yes. Because there's light, and we have had some pretty rare snow cancellations, but that is not very often.
So it's seasonal in a way that would significantly influence, like, if we were gonna build an indoor facility versus an outdoor and expect only a portion of the year to be bringing in revenue if it was outdoor only?
Oh, right.
Because it's booked up all the time, even in poor weather.
Yeah, with the lights, the combination of the turf and the lights creates usability all year in this climate.
Sure.
Point I were here, too, on the, on the general fund question. You know, we've talked about this as well. This is a community park.
I'm just curious how much, but no, it should be general fund revenue. I have no issue with that at all.
That's the beautiful nature of the design, is it can tell regional service and needs and tournaments, but also that be a community resource for people in the area.
Always people in that park, I mean, always.
And those community events, too.
Don't we have a contract that, with the, how would you call it, the food service out there? That applies to this? How much of that is, they lease it, right, or they have a contract?
Yes, yep. We do have a concessions contract, and it is, I want to say, twenty-two thousand dollars off the top of my head, is the revenue for that.
I think it's slightly higher, Jen, this year with our new contract.
Thank you. But we do not take, we don't do percentage. It's a, it's a lease, concession, concession lease.
This one you can count on.
Yep.
Excuse me. So this, this is a one-year outlook for the Rack. You have revenues in the blue line, you have expenditures in the red line, and it's not important for you to see the numbers themselves, but just the direction in which those lines are going. And of course, with the fifteen-year extension, that would expire in December of two thousand forty-two. So that's why you're seeing that big drop in two thousand forty-three. At that point, you know, there's quite the deficit. But in terms of just to kind of talk through the reasonableness of this, because it looks very dramatic. Oh, yes.
Do you finish your point?
Sure. So in terms of the expenditures, this is about a three percent increase each year. Like I said, this is a very labor-intensive operation, so the cost of labor tends to rise higher than inflation. In terms of expenditures, it's about a one percent increase per year throughout this period. And the main reason for that is those operating transfers aren't increasing. It's only one percent on the forty percent. That's, you know, not one percent, but in terms of inflationary increase, it's only on that forty percent of that pie. So that's why you're seeing a pretty big departure in the rate of growth.
Just while it was on my mind, seeing as that it is getting booked every weekend, and that is such a high-traffic area, is it possible or feasible to have a section separated out for the permanent location for the food truck park? You know, if it's busy all weekend and we have that much traffic. And we have that much traffic going on right there and we gotta build something anyway, it seems. Like a.
That could be something we look into and then, you know, wherever the folks we go into and design, we can take a look and see if we can build that in designs. Not a bad idea.
The E, you know, super, you know, amount of traffic versus where we hear it is now.
Yeah, one one word of caution there when we find it, public facilities with that, there's a limitation on how much private use. Could be used, but I I doubt that'll be an issue, but it's certainly something we'll need to look into. Um I will point out in these, especially on the expenditure side, uh this is really just a straight line. Inflationary increase throughout that period, so there's no. Um consideration for additional staff or any additional operating expenses in terms of an expansion, so. You know, the three hundred fifty thousand per year is an example from the the baseball fields, that's not included in these numbers. So we want to talk a little bit about what the future will look like in terms of the public facility district sales tax. The two thousand and twenty four number there, one point seven million, that is what is budgeted this year. Uh there's two percent increases throughout this uh fifteen year expanded uh period. Uh just for reference, uh the city sales tax increased from two ti- two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty three was one point nine. So two percent is is pretty close to that. Um and really what I want to walk the council through is. To give you an idea in terms of the decision making, so as we look at these. Future revenues, I kind of just want to take it step by step in terms of the capacity we have. Uh to give you some kind of thoughts on uh how we're going to uh. Bridge that gap as an example and how we're going to um, you know, look at preserving that M and O piece as well, so.
So the the PFD dollars, one point seven. But on the previous side, it showed that the PFD dollars contributing were two hundred thousand. Is this? I, am I missing something or am I just?
Bridge, bridge that gap for you with the next slide.
Okay.
So this is just total uh the total share that Lacey receives or is projected to receive throughout this period. So getting to the deputy mayor's question, so um same numbers, same total, uh broken out into. Uh remaining PF, PFD sales tax within the green and then the blue is where we have that support, so. Um you can see from two thousand and twenty four through two thousand and twenty nine, that's two hundred thousand per year of public facility district sales tax. Um per the uh long term plan, it goes to four hundred thousand per year in two thousand or twenty thirty. Um but I will point out that we actually are contributing four hundred thousand right now, but it is through reserves, so two thousand and twenty four. Um we're using the last of, I think it was a three year reserve from the general fund, so that's part of that. Five hundred and eighty six thousand dollar number from the pie chart. Um two thousand and twenty five, that is scheduled to switch to uh public facility district reserve, so there'll be another additional. Two hundred thousand in addition to the two hundred that's here on this slide. So again, we are currently subsidizing through this. In the two hundred four hundred thousand, it's just the difference is coming from what I'll call the operations and what's coming from reserves. So starting in two thousand and twenty five, there is a one million dollar reserve. We'll cover five years of that additional two hundred thousand. And what and what I have highlighted there in twenty thirty is the. The lowest level of remaining public facility district dollars, so. Think debt service, that would be that absolute maximum we would have for annual debt service in this scenario. So the next slide, this it's the same information, again, remaining PFD sales tax in green. Uh in blue, you still have the uh two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollar subsidy. And then I have layered in the deficit from the line graph, so you could see the deficit grows. And so what this assumes is that the general fund will not. Uh make up for that deficit, it'll come from public facility district sales taxes. So you could see in twenty forty two, the projected annual deficit is seven hundred and thirty thousand. So under this scenario, it's uh it's considered covered by the public facility district sales tax.
Does does PFD have reserves?
Does about one point nine, one point eight, one point nine million. Uh plus the million dollar reserve um for. The additional turn a thousand per year, so it's about two point nine, three million altogether. Um again, I have highlighted in twenty forty two, the lowest level of available public facility district sales tax. It's just about one point three million, so again, think what might be available for. Uh potential debt service in terms of um expanding the facility. Do want to talk about lifecycle capital for the rack? This is a ten year snapshot of what we have scheduled or. Uh what's in the financial plan for lifecycle replacements. Uh there are um. Some bigger categories like lighting, field replacement, uh both the outfield at the at the baseball fields as well as the synthetic turf. Uh there is a lot of smaller uh lifecycle replacements, things shelters, benches, trash, you know, uh. Cans, that type of thing, asphalt sidewalks, fencing, I mean, there is, it's a, you know, it's a big facility, so. Over this ten year period, it's about seven million dollars in uh scheduled uh replacement. Some of it is got funding. As an example, we do have a five hundred thousand dollar reserve for lifecycle replacements. So that would, you know, definitely cover some of these costs. We have about two point two million dollars in reserves for the synthetic field replacement. Uh I think we're scheduled for about one point seven, one point eight in field replacement, uh starting in twenty eight, going into thirty and thirty one. Um so that's not to say this is all unfunded, but there's definitely a a piece of it is not funded. So let's talk about debt and the potential for debt. So what you have on the the bottom access is the annual debt payment. And then you have um the vertical access, you're looking at the amount of on proceeds or what would be available for uh construction, so. A few different scenar- scenarios for you there. Um you know, six hundred thousand of debt payments per year, eight hundred thousand, and then going up to one point two six. Um to give you an idea on the uh the current debt, which was issued in two thousand and seven, that was. A four point eight million dollar issue, uh its debt payments are about five hundred and eighty thousand roughly. Um and um we'll pay those off in uh December of two thousand and twenty seven, so. Uh that's the reference, this is the fifteen year term and matches the extension of the public facility district. Um so what I have highlighted there on the far right is the one point two six million dollars per year for debt service, that would net. Um about fourteen million. Uh that's pretty close to the twelve point two million that you saw for the baseball fields, for the soccer fields. Uh but there's a couple factors there to think about, there's inflation, so that. At least for the baseball fields, that twelve million dollar estimate is a two thousand and twenty three number. We wouldn't probably start construction until two thousand and twenty six, so that could be close to fourteen million.
Um at at the four percent annual.
Uh I think it is four percent, I guess, yeah. Um construction, as you know, inflation is a little more volatile and tends to rise a little bit higher, so yeah, I think it is four percent. Um also, we need to consider debt issue costs. Uh those are often percentage points on the principal. So that might be as high as two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand to actually issue the debt. We have to hire attorneys, we have to hire bond underwriters for that process. We have to go to market, somebody actually has to sell the bonds on our behalf. Um also typically within uh bond covenants, we have a reserve requirement. Uh that's often equal to one year's payment, so that's one point two six million. It's often funded from the the bond proceeds, so um even um. Even with this, we'll be a little bit under that twelve million, I'm thinking. Terms of getting the, one of those phases uh built. Uh but we do have reserves, this is deputy mayor pointed out, we have about two million in reserves. Um Rick and I were chatting about some of this and we thought maybe we would. Talk to the council about converting that reserve that we have for the two hundred thousand per year for five years. Start funding that out of PFD now and preserve that reserves, we'll have. Three million to go towards um an expansion or funding the uh reserves, so. Um we do have some options, I think we could get to that. Um that twelve, fourteen million um range uh pretty safely.
All right, well, thanks Troy. Um so, yeah, like I said, I do have a recommendation. And this this slide shows, uh it's a little wonky with the roads here, but this is a drone shot of the current rack and then this is a. You know, from Google, so it's quite, the angle is a little bit different, but you get the idea. Um so the staff recommendation is to pursue focusing uh the design for rack phase three. On option one, which is the fast pitch baseball softball um. Focus to fill the current needs and then that would include the opportunities um like we talked about, such as multi-use on the fields. Uh plus a wood bat league and community events, including concerts, you know, those types of opportunities. Um weekday community use and weekend expanded tournaments. We also recommend the conversion of the current rack field two um from natural grass to synthetic turf. So currently, field one is the only synthetic turf soccer field at the site. Uh and so if we could convert this one over and add the lighting and then if we could add some bleachers um. Uh to kind of boost this to a championship level field, the the current field one. Uh for enhanced use for, you know, USL championship field and or. Better amenities for college level play. So the next, um yeah, so next we have the mentee poll. So if you want to. We've got some questions.
Yeah, can you talk some to um the Little League, you know, capital Little League who need who or need to do something in the next several years, obviously. Would this accommodate, if we went this route with with option one, would be able to accommodate any of that to help them? Well, I'm thinking, I mean, they're spending.
Great question.
Because we, they're, they would be a financial partner in it too, I would think. In the sense of they're paying, I don't know, I think they're up to about a hundred grand a year now for the rent, for the space they're in.
Yeah, they would definitely be a rental, you know, user group. Um so the challenge, and we did talk to them about this, is the number of fields that they need adjacent. So they have seven fields currently. Um and so um. So we have, we would have eight here. But it's hard to tell if the actual schedule of what they need would match. Because we can, you know, we can make smaller fields out of the bigger fields with the fencing. Um but, you know, and also it's separated by Marvin Road, so I think there would be some challenges with accommodating all of their needs. Now, we did ask them, you know, would you be willing to? Have games at different locations and they were, you know, if they had to, they said.
They do it, they do it now, I mean, you know, I I only know because my granddad plays capo, you know, plays on that league. They play games in other places now. Most of their games are there in that facility. But I don't know if you've been out there, but talk about some really rough conditions, those fields are a disaster, I mean, they're horrible. Um but they play in, you know, Centralia and they play, they do do some other places that they play.
So it definitely helps.
Their games are during the week. They're not all on weekends. I was there last night for a game, another one tonight, but you know, they play all week. So that might, you know, if they can be flexible in their scheduling, that might be able to use it more weekday type stuff.
So if we're already subsidizing the current rack and we add more fields. Is that also increasing the amount that we're more likely going to be subsidizing for those fields and? How much would some more tournaments actually offset that? Would it offset it enough to make any sort of difference or are we just increasing the amount of money that we're? We're going to be putting into this?
Yeah, there's likely to be, the deficit will grow.
That's kind of my big worry.
So the three hundred fifty thousand is the estimate for increased M and O for the baseball field option. I don't believe we even brought in three hundred thousand MVPs for the current operation.
My my kind of big worry here is. And I run a fitness center and I I know that if I cater towards one community, I'm alienating all the other communities. And so. Currently. We're catering towards extraordinarily small percentage of our actual Lacey residents. With even the setup of the rack right now, it's really just the people who are playing there, playing soccer, playing baseball, softball. And if you, you know, some of the people who go to the park, but. We're not adding. Any more of our own residents, you know, customer base, so to speak, with this plan and that's kind of where my. Big worry kind of comes across in general, is that we're not expanding use for our actual residents.
I I think during the week you you are, because there's always room for practicing and and the different levels and.
But that's only for people who currently play, but we're not, we're not going to get more softball players or more baseball players. We're going to draw some from other places, but I'm talking about just our our residents.
And and that's the thing that's even more important, that we're getting people's expendables, you know, their their dollars from. That that we would normally travel to their city and spend and enhance their um quality of life, if you will. Does that make sense? I mean, because I spent twenty years basically with kids and sports, traveling to everywhere else, spending my money in other cities. And enhancing their quality of life when. The s- the study we had just a few years ago, when we went out for the Metropolitan Parks District, proved that people want to come here. You don't have to go through Seattle, you don't have to go all the way to Spokane, people want to go down, travel past Portland, they want to come here, so you know, it's a. And those are the dollars that are that go the the furthest, other people's dollars that.
So I think my is our, the use, I feel is a little limited with this. I'm not saying that, that's what we should be looking for, is bring more people in. But again, we're s- on, we're going in such a hard direction in use. That there's not, okay, so we're only still attracting those people, but what about the people who play everything else or want to do everything else?
So that that actually brings me to my question. So normally, when we make this kind of decision, um which is is pretty, pretty good sized decision for us and. Uh twenty six acres and um normally, we 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 would bring in like um a space needs analysis expert. Uh um and and hire them to say, hey, you know, what do you think? Um based on all your information, your market data, your research, your your GIS and your, you know. Geo fencing and all the, all those different pieces that they bring to the table uh and and get that that opinion. Are we, are we planning on doing that too, so that we can get that opinion and see?
Well, one of the pieces, though, we have been doing a lot of community outreach and and data gathering over the last several years to come up with what are those community partners and needs. I think the added information um denied is the actual. Operations and what they're seeing as customers and who's, you know, being turned away and the volume of that turn away. Um and going forward, we need to start moving forward and developing concept designs to get into construction design in order to meet our timing for a. Public facilities uh district bond issuance. Uh but so a lot of this is informed, we haven't done down to um, you know, uh hiring a consultant, but we've been doing this work over the last several years. The um. Yeah, and then looking at multiple uses and and those type of things, but in addition to that, I think Jen talked about with looking at these different scenarios, whether it be. Um baseball, soccer, indoor sports, those three options. Uh looking at how you can get multipurpose use out of those fields or advanced that can bring more. Interest into from broader community, some of them may not be interested in um, you know, sports, they may be interested in. The festival or a concert or those type of things that these things can accommodate. So there is some crossover. Um even though it's, you know, outline of the fields is a particular sporting event.
So would it, would it be wise and to to, you know, get that consultation before we get too far down the road, because we're, if we. You know, we start on any of this, you know, there's really no turning back, it's. And if we, you know, if we get those options in front of us, I think that.
What are you looking for from now? Well, I mean, you know, we've hired consultant, I'm not a big fan, as you probably know, hiring consultants to tell us what we already know. And I think that's what we're talking about here, but we know. There's a need for fields, right? I mean, they're turning away tournaments because we don't have enough fields for the tournaments. Um we, so I'm just not sure what you're trying to accomplish, plus the the timing issue. Yeah.
That's that's it, nothing more. I don't have an agenda.
Yeah.
Um uh but as as long as, you know, we know Rocko's on turn and we 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 know all of our options, I think we're we're going to be, make the best. Decision that we can make as a group. Decision that we can make as a group. So um I see a handout over here. Sir, what is your name?
Uh I'm Ryan.
Brian?
Holy soccer.
Holy soccer?
Are we allowed to speak uh?
If the council allows it, absolutely. Um all in favor?
Yeah.
Hi. Please come to the table, Ryan.
Uh just in regards to the recommendation, I don't know if you could go back to that slide, Jen.
Please have a seat with us.
Alright, um just uh it's it's regarding the USL soccer franchise. And what you have been um calling a championship level soccer field. Um it would be the best recommendation to have Washington State High School playoffs, college playoffs, college games. USL championship soccer cannot just be bleachers on the sideline. It would have to be maybe a cutaway of that entire hill next to that field one. It would have to have a thousand plus uh major grandstand with locker rooms built into it to house any type of collegiate. Like larger scale event exhibitions with MLS, USL.
Right, you guys entered into an agreement with Northerson Public High School.
We're with South Town.
With South Town High School to, for their facility because of the lockers, locker rooms and showers.
Yes, sir. Yes, we have to have locker rooms and you have to have, technically, you're supposed to have fifteen hundred plus seats. Um so just i- i- a part of the recommendation part of it, I would just say, if you wanted that to be truly a championship field. Which I think is a great recommendation, it just has to be more than just bleachers. It has to be a grandstand. I would say fifteen hundred plus with locker room, showers, concessions and, you know, um. Uh crowd flow on restricting attendance and things like that, so.
So that kind of design would take two of those fields.
Uh that that soccer field uh is roughly a hundred and fifteen yards long. And that hillside to the left, if you're staring at that map, um if you utilize that entire hillside. And you go the length of the field, you can easily accommodate a thousand to fifteen hundred um grandstand seats. And then you go upward stadium seating, then you have a view of Mount Rainier at also. And then underneath it, you have locker rooms, concessions underneath it, players walk out. You're talking about MLS, tourism, help like major heads and beds. An increase in tourism, if you can get that grandstand in there.
And that's a big thing, the economic impact that that, I mean, there's sports, there's a trillion dollar annual impact to to community.
And that's one of the the pieces we're trying with this recommendation that Jim put up there, is trying to figure out how we accommodate. As most local and regional use, but also these higher level uses, both for soccer and baseball, and be able to create that opportunity. And and Ryan's right, there are, there are, you know, bleachers probably a a misnomer, it's really how you create those uh the stadiums type seating. But those are things that will come out through our design.
They'll only enhance what we already have. And and when when facilities in in the districts in. Or the local colleges and high schools, they'll they'll be used when they're, right now, they're normally not. Cause it'd be overflow from.
Well, I mean, that that certainly isn't accommodated for the fourteen million dollars that we're talking about. You're talking significantly more money. To go to that kind of grandstand and locker room and all that. I mean, you're probably. I don't know how to, I mean, I have no clue how much, but you're not, the fourteen million we're talking about, you're you're certainly adding five plus million, I would think, to get to that level. Right, wouldn't that, I mean, wouldn't you agree? And it's not, it's not within that fourteen million for sure.
Right, so I mean, you have to do a deeper dive on that.
Definitely, we gotta do more of a design detail, so we can figure out what that actual cost is and figure out, do, what do we have? And what do we need to find maybe other partners to come up and help us with that, because that becomes more of that regional drawing activity.
Well, and that's what they did in Centralia with Lyle Overbay in the city and partnered in private pu- public partnership there.
Is the indoor facility just kind of not even feasible? I mean, and I know Quaymood. They say they wanna do something like that, it sounds good, but if they're not gonna make money, I I hardly see them doing that actually. And it's the only option that actually expands local customer bases, just all my thought.
And then there was that feasibility study that we did in twenty eighteen, it showed that there is a demand of various scales. I think the uh the model or this footprint that was been presented today was the the smallest version of that. Uh but the challenge is, is is not only is it um a greater cost. Um it also is that ongoing lifecycle maintenance of a building and facility and HVAC system. That that and also, I think, if I remember right, that feasibility study also identified the the. Though the the best location would be over north of I five, part of the Quaymood Village, where locals and many.
Yeah, and and importantly, just the funding opportunity that would be there in conjunction.
But if this might be a springboard, you know, we show something in real life, that people could see, feel, touch, right? Uh and prove to, that business will come if, you know, the need is there, demand is there. And then we could possibly go to, back to the, ask for the Metropolitan Parks District, District and fund this seriously. And really put Lacey on the spot as a destination, sports destination, a real one, not just fly by night.
And we're coming up on the far the agenda. I'm sorry.
So, Scott, remember the study, the indoor facility said two things. Said there's a great demand, people really want it, but also said it'll never pay for itself.
Correct.
So there's that financial side. And then also, you get to remember when it comes to different things. If people want a tier one city, they're gonna go to a tier one city for for an event. I too have grandkids that are running around the country to watch, you know, those events. So if people want something in Seattle, they're not coming to Lacey. You know, we don't get Seattle overflow. And that was stated by the director of the Washington State Convention Center. So anyway.
Yeah, but I mean, they used to say the same thing about Sacramento being so close to the Bay Area too, you know, and and, you know. They're finally acting like a a big city. Not that we'll, we're gonna be any size of that in the next hundred years, who knows? I don't know. But, I mean, if we're gonna be in the game, we need to be in the game, like, in the game, not just.
One of the, one of the pieces, though, is we do know that the Regional Athletic Complex does attract a lot of people into the community. And and um hotel beds and those type of things. And so we do have that, and it's also a commu- a local community resource as well. And looking at this, we have an opportunity with the legislation to extend the the PFD timeline another fifteen years. Versus expiring in twenty twenty-seven, how do we best utilize and expand that rack facility in order to try to reach as much of the local customers? As well as that regional draw that's affordable to the city of Lacey.
So what's our timeline for renewal?
It's a.
So, yeah, we were gonna, we're gonna skip to that first and then we'll come back to the questions. It sounds like we need a timeline discussion.
Sure, so, so keep in mind, a key component of extending the sales taxes, having outstanding debt. So that is the timeline we're running, and that's basically what this is illustrating. So um you know, we've, we already have the in a local agreement signed, that got signed in December of last year. So that was a pretty big step in terms of researching and working with our local partners. Um we confirmed everything with Department of Revenue to make sure that all these steps are are going to qualify for the extension of that sales tax. So go to the fourth uh line there, the rack concept and city council budget approval, that's that's now. Um so we really, in order to get this programmed into our budget uh next year. Uh we need some decisions here pretty quickly. So we're going to start, well, actually, we're already started our budget process for twenty twenty-five. Um so we need to get our budget requests in, we need to get staff moving in that direction and thinking about that by early summer. So with June, end of June.
So if we.
There's no new debt, you can't extend the P D F.
Yeah, exactly. We gotta have that to Europe.
I mean, alright, um. Look, look at how many hotels and restaurants have come since the rack was built. You know, um I warned about the, you know, our our neighboring cities, now they all have MPDs. And, you know, the the Bucknell Fields is gone. I said, and once that was gone, it wasn't gonna be replaced, and it hasn't. We're, we're gonna lose our our one, one of our things we're really good at, that everybody wants to do here. To our neighboring cities if we don't get our act together. And and it's good to have competition, don't get me wrong. They'll only compliment what we're doing here, but we need to do something. You cannot have a facility that's sold out for twenty plus years. And not build off that success. That that is a mistake. So whatever we do here, when you get our act together. Cause we're running out of time and we're only gonna lose this market.
Well, I think um um, I wanna think we have some mentee meter slides to try and take some couple of questions, if that may help the conversation too. Um at the council's discretion, um I think we have like, you know, questions related to the staff recommendation. And um as well as uh how how we should look at uh other sources of funds to help support it. Um and then how we leverage those PFD dollars. So that, maybe if it's over here with the council, yeah, if it over to Jen, to start like the mentee meter.
Yes, so you got the QR code and the link, uh if you need the link.
So we just wanna make sure, you know, before we go too far, um, you know, if we, if we. It's it's kind of like Councilmember Danny was saying, that we're we're, we've got this geared towards, you know, one group of people. We, I'm not sure that we know all of our options. Um and I understand the clock is ticking, so. Um but I I wanna make sure that everybody understands, or at least is hearing that. We need to know all of our options um for this parcel and how we can, you know, best make this thing adjacent to it. The best thing that we can have. And I agree with the USL, you know, we we, if if we are going to to make. Um, you know, seating and locker room and and get a championship field, um that's an addition that we need to consider. Potentially even, you know, vet and vet and price out. Um but I don't, I don't, I don't know that we know all of our options because we haven't, you know, we haven't reached out. And said, hey, please let us know what you think of of this. And we we haven't had the analysis. We've, we've had an internal analysis and we always do that.
They have done it. They've been doing public outreach on this for a long time already.
We have a study that came in.
And one of the pieces too is is before we go down one path or another and spend uh that money on design development to get kind of more. What would fit, what the cost would be, we need to have a general direction in order to do that. And I know Jamie has some uh ration time as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking, maybe kind of keep in mind that this is one piece of a whole. In the next presentation, we'll be talking about the entire park system. That, as Jen mentioned, is only thirty-five percent developed, and so we have an abundance of development opportunities within our park system. And so, absolutely, I agree with you. How are we going to develop the, what's our plan to develop the entire thing? And so right now, we're just talking about this small piece of the pie that is specifically oriented towards athletic fields. But once we get to the next piece, that plan is going to like continue to expand to include spray parks and additional playgrounds. And additional trails. And so that's where your extra, extra community members will benefit the most, for sure. And so this is specifically, this parcel fits a very specific need, being so close to how how it's already been developed. Kind of like Councilmember was saying, that you continue to develop that specific area for that specific need. And then address those other, other community needs with the remaining development plan.
That's a, that's a great point, Rick said.
This is the rack, reg- regional athletic complex. The idea is to expand that complex, which is, I think, why we're. Being presented with three options that are all sports related, because it's a, an expansion of the regional athletic complex. We've got lots of other parks that will do other things with us.
And that was well said, and the reason we broke it up into two sides, because this has a particular, a specific funding mechanism tied to it that we need to exercise on. When we get into our second presentation tonight and conversation, as Jamie mentioned, we talk about all the other park offerings and minis for the community. And some other options for funding those efforts out of different parts.
Are you still gonna be showing a hybrid option?
Um the hybrid option would be baseball focus on the actual twenty, the extra twenty-six acres. But then also converting one of the soccer fields to turf. So that's where the hybrid, so we're. Yeah, so I have a, I I just have a clarification about when when you say one use. Um because the, like, the current um rack baseball complex is used by a lot of different sports. Not just baseball, it is focused on baseball. Um but there's also the turf with lights that we u- we utilize for lots of different user groups. Um and then there's the park, the free park component to it, which, like Jamie said, is it's an extension of that. With some walking trails and opportunities to be in nature, um also the community event aspect. And so, um, so yeah, just with the one use, I'm not sure, I I feel like it's a multi-use.
I got a question. Um so, a little m- little MOU between us. When I, hybrid for me was was um one soccer field and two baseball fields.
On the twenty-six acres.
On the twenty-six acres. That's what I was thinking, I was thinking hybrid, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, so I was thinking that as a hybrid option, because yes, we need more fields, yes, we need more, another field. So so if, if if there was a possibility of that on the other side, there could be one, you know. It, one soccer stadium with all the needs of, you know, collegiate level soccer stuff. And then two baseball fields.
So the idea with, yeah, I see what you're saying.
When it comes to the rack, if the only thing that that we can do wrong is nothing.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? So we know that something needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's proven, it's sold out. We need to do something. I've been kicking the can down the river for twenty years.
Cause when you, when you showed the the soccer stadium, that looked really great and everything, uh and then I thought, okay, well, if. If these guys over here on the right are playing, you know, and they're they're trying to get to to the stadium. Because, you know, through their their semi-levels, um and we still had two additional baseball fields on that side. Wouldn't it, it would kind of serve both purposes.
But is there, I mean, it didn't sound to me from saying that we really needed more soccer field as much as we needed. More baseball field, right, in the community in general. And you would have the enhancement of that so, of the soccer field, that's the existing soccer field, bringing two to turf and, you know, and. Putting in seating and all that on t- on on field one.
So then it would turn into a cost issue. Is it, you know, is it, is it more costly to to develop that hillside? Put bleachers on it, uh or is it more costly to move all that dirt around and flatten it out for a baseball field or fill the stadium?
I I think it's a, it's a cost issue either way.
Yeah.
And uh we uh, you know, working with the hillside is is maybe a little bit more cost than working with flat land. But you still have the structure yourself, it is still gonna be the structure. So I think that's the other thing we don't know. That's what we gotta get into design and kind of figure out what those those things are. Have a little more information, which is what we're looking toward.
But it's all good if we let it, the time, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The funding mechanism run out.
We, we would have more information, and this is not a, today, we'd be coming back and updating the council on what design looks like, what the. Those pieces before we even get to the point of uh debt issuance and going forward and approving a project. So this is, this is the first step in a series of time that we're going to be working on developing the plans, developing the concept. We'll be coming back talking about where we are and and updating on the the uh form and the climate. And there's sort of just several steps and touch base with the council through this process.
I was just gonna say, and I want to clarify, I a hundred percent agree that we need to do something, and I'm not opposed to baseball fields or soccer fields or whatever that looks like. Um the main overarching point, and I think you you emphasized it a little bit, is that I think during this design process. We need to make sure that there is, because we only see baseball fields or soccer fields on there. But we need to make sure that since our residents are gonna be paying for it, that there are reasons. And that doesn't mean big, you know, huge facilities, but there are things that would attract them to go there on a regular basis. And and that's what my overall overarching point is, that like they should get value to, not just the people coming in from other places.
Alright, so we have, so. So if you could kindly hit the thumbs up so that we know you're in and making sure that you're not having any technical difficulties. So we should have six total, correct? Because the, oh, oh, okay, well, it won't count. It won't count you twice on this note. So we're trying to get to six, and if you need help, just raise your hand. Make sure you get in.
I have built that, the red thumbs up.
I don't mind the blue.
We have six, Jenny.
Oh, everyone's different color.
Oh, okay.
Looks like everybody's in, thank you. Okay, so the first question that is gonna be the next slide is um regarding the staff recommendation. So we did, you know, look at that slide and discuss it quite a bit. Um so the question is to move move forward with the staff recommendation. Yes or no? The responses will be hidden until everybody. Uh we wouldn't have time to hire a consultant in the timeline. I mean, that's.
I was like, sorry.
Yeah.
Waste of money.
You are consulting.
He said, waste the money.
I think there are things that we need consultants for, and there's a lot of things that we hire consultants for to prove to us what we already knew. We do it all the time, not just us, but cities in general. We do it all the time, not just us, but cities in general, used to have this discussion with Scott often about wasting our money on consultants. Cause we did it many times.
And the study that came out right since you, right as the MPD, uh, went.
Have you ever seen a consultant report that had a consideration that you didn't have or we didn't have as a council?
All of them are bad.
Okay.
You know, I'm saying, a lot of the times that we do it, it'll be like this, I don't see it.
Uh, looks like we need two more. It's right here, it's just this one, so.
You have to have a.
You have them all now?
Um, we have, we need one more, there we go, okay, so H. Next question is regarding, um. Uh, seeking other sources of revenue, so something that hasn't come up yet tonight, but we wanted to ask the question, um. If you think it's a good idea to seek other sources of revenue, such as lodging tax.
It's more pressure maintenance type.
We're already getting lodging tax.
There is.
I'm not sure what, we're saying other sources of revenue.
Such as.
Lodging tax isn't another source, I'm, I'm, it's just, it's really hard to answer that without knowing what you mean, if you rephrase it.
Other sorts of revenue or increased existing sources of revenue, like reserves, general fund, increase request from a lodging tax commission. Those type of things.
That was a little, that was a little too vague for me to answer.
Does that mean you're not going to answer it?
I answered it.
Oh, okay.
No, and, and I, I won't say yes to additional taxes.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna say these, these, these are final decisions on these type of.
Oh, I know.
But that's a big policy decision, if you like, look at lodging tax dollars, because there's a lot of events and marketing is funded out of that, and if you change that ratio, that's gonna affect other things. So that's a different conversation, but just wanna see what the.
I get it.
Interest level.
Okay, um, and then, um. The last question, um, has to do with the public facilities district funds, so on this slide. Uh, please allocate, you have a hundred points, so that's a hundred percent of the funding, and so what we'd like to see is where you would. Uh, break that out between the capital and the maintenance operations and lifecycle replacements, and so. You'll see on your screen, you can allocate, um, points up and down.
Enjoy may give you some context of what we currently do.
Sure, so currently we're at that sixty forty, so sixty percent subsidized, but thinking long range. So that's seven hundred and thirty thousand more deficit, till twenty years from now, that's about fifty fifty. Um, one other maybe alternative thought in terms of making up that deficit, we actually apply more general fund revenues towards that deficit, maybe. Cut in half, like three hundred and fifty, uh, from PFD, get three hundred and fifty from additional general fund revenues. That would be more like a seventy thirty split, so seventy percent capital, thirty percent.
Let the record reflect, I think all of the council members. Would have more choices on the survey if we could, this is very much a straw poll, but in that scenario, we wouldn't necessarily just say, okay. We're gonna switch to seventy thirty right now, I'm assuming there would be a gradual shift. Right, it wouldn't be like today, we're gonna start spending a whole bunch more money on operations, cause right now we don't need to, but over time we will. So, wouldn't we actually have a plan to sort of gradually increase the amount of the PFD that would be going toward M and O?
That's correct, maybe frame this in terms of the debt service, so the debt, think of a maximum debt service amount again, that one point two six. Gets us to, uh, the staff recommendation. Um, you know, like a seventy thirty split is pretty close, so revenues are gonna grow over time, but that debt service obligation is going to be constant across. That fifteen years, so it will eventually grow into that thirty percent, but yes, your point is is spot on in terms of growing into that. Maximum thirty percent or whatever that percentage is.
And the key thing, the less you spend on the capital spending, the more operation means, the less we can build, but the more we can, but the more we can maintain, or vice versa.
So the, the way I look at this is like, um, March's sales tax receipts, right, was over. One point two six million, which added revenue to us a hundred and one thousand dollars, say, three months of that we could apply. So if we had three good months, we could apply it to this and it'd be done.
Survey says.
Well, we appreciate your feedback.
So that averages the responses, so, um.
Anything else on the timeline?
Well, maybe I get, answer some of the deputy mayor's questions in terms of how tight that timeline is, so, you know, if we get. To the beginning of this next, next budget cycle, which starts, essentially, the really heavy work starts in the summer. Uh, that would give us, you know, eighteen months or so to do design, uh, which is. Realistic, think how long it took to design Police Station, how long it's taken to design Great Kyo Park, so. That is a, you know, multi-year endeavor. Um, we'll need to initiate the bond issue, uh, process early two thousand twenty seven. Uh, so we'd like to have design done by then, so we actually know that when we're ready to actually. Issue the debt, we'll be ready to hit the ground and and start constructing, cause once we get the bond. Uh, proceeds, we have a, a window in order to spend those, or we start paying penalty to the IRS on those funds, so that.
And that's what I was gonna ask, what happens if we miss the window, the deadline or whatever?
Yeah, well, if we miss the deadline and we don't issue debt before, especially in December twenty seven, or. Uh, December twenty twenty seven, then the sales tax goes away, it will expire. So, yeah, we'll need to start issuing debt early twenty seven, actually issue the debt before construction season twenty twenty seven. And then for twenty, mid twenty twenty seven, we'll have between eighteen and twenty-four months to actually build and complete the.
So the design has to start relatively soon, or that doesn't.
Twenty twenty five is.
So we're gonna go into this year's budget request, it's another opportunity for the council reviews during the budget process.
True.
Any other questions?
Just quickly, what about crossing, are are we just talking about using that crosswalk and cars would have to drive? Back and forth over, like, just it is a dangerous area, so I'm wondering what what type of considerations we have thought about there.
Yeah, thank you, that, it will definitely be part of the conversation and, and.
I, I had that conversation with C manager earlier today, uh, cause that was a huge concern of mine, and so I did ask. Um, that we take a look at the possibility of a, some kind of a, a skybridge, and that's a lot of concrete. Um, but, uh, if, if if something goes over there and it, and it's, it's, it's. Something that's gonna be used on both sides, we need a way to get people across Marvin Road safely, and so that is going to be looked into as well.
I will say from past experiences, towns like, um, Bend, Oregon, you know, it's not uncommon for you to play on a field here and go across town to another field. It's, it's just what happens when you have major tournaments that bring in major revenue, that's filling all your hotels and. And your restaurants and yours, you know, so.
I was just thinking safety wise, cause it's such a busy corridor.
Yeah, and you got, you got a lot of kids, and getting them across a five-lane road, you know, I, we can't afford to have an accident.
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up, because what, the other thing I was thinking about too is. This whole subdivision going in where the post rooms was, and the traffic that's gonna generate on Stillcom.
Yeah, and then Buck Mill Ball Field's, uh, uh, Early Learning Development Center, that's less than fifty, hundred yards away. So we we're really gonna start thinking about how we're gonna keep people safe on that corridor.
So, um, so maybe we'll move on to the next. This is, this is the other, this is the, um, if we are, oh, this is another, uh. Path of it, and 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 Jamie alluded to it, this is direct of the park offerings that we have for priorities going forward, and we're gonna go through kind of a similar format. Where we're gonna talk about, um, some of our existing facilities, what it costs to maintain, and we kinda understand where we are in terms of funding. And, you know, through, again, a lot of robust and, um, diligent community engagement, we got a lot of list of priorities and needs throughout the community. So this is, and those priors and what, um, over the next, that this community would like to see over the next, uh, five to six years. So we wanna go through an exercise of looking at those priorities, what they may cost, and then also go through, ensure the funding options, but ultimately. Uh, look at having, uh, forming some type of, uh, parks funding work group to help do a deeper dive and some more community engagement in terms of. Making some recommendations to council in the fall, but before we get to that, I wanna, uh, you know, again, have, uh, Jen, Joy, Jamie kinda walk through our current. Park systems, the, the pressures and demands on those, and then how do we look at this list going forward, and how do we try to make this. Um, real for the community that they identify that they would like to have.
Well, thank you, Rick and and council members again, um, for the opportunity, so. I will kick off this portion of our discussion, um, just give me a quick overview, uh, like Rick said. We will be looking at current operations and conditions of both Parks Culture Recreation and Public Works Park Maintenance. Um, sharing how these two departments work together to serve Lacey, um, I'll share community feedback we've compiled on what residents want from their spaces. And, um, and also our shift away from property acquisition to more of the focus on accessibility and improvement of the current spaces. And then, of course, knowing that we have, um, revenue gaps to meeting the needs of the community, we'll then talk about finding a path forward. To be able to improve and maintain the park system, uh, with Lacey's growing population. Uh, so with that being said, let's back up and just review a little bit, um, services that Lacey Parks Culture Recreation provides the community, um. So there's eighteen FTA, FTEs in Parks Culture Recreation, plus a lot of part-time staff and contracted instructors. Um, and, um, businesses as well to run camps and and classes, et cetera. So we do offer a wide range of, um, activities to the community, the department offers, you know, up to approximately eight hundred programs per year. Between sports and fitness, aquatics, museum, um, community recreation. Think, you know, day camps, teen camps, trips, all the the classes and the programs that we do offer. Lacey is known for its sports facilities, I know that's already come up tonight, um, such as the Rack and Rainier Vista. And we do have a longstanding joint use partnership with North Houston Public Schools, and that allows our sports organizations. Um, to access fields and facilities with a one-stop shop, so we, our staff actually schedule a lot of the school district fields. For sports users, and then we can get them space between the, you know, between the city and the school district fields. Um, sports and fitness staff, they, they book the fields and they run leagues and programs at both city and school district sites. Aquatics staff book North Houston Public Schools, uh, pools and offer programs and swim lessons. Uh, we have amazing facilities such as Lacey Community Center, the museum, and the Jacob Smith House. Uh, these serve as important gathering spaces, um, uh, to celebrate and also to learn at the museum. So in addition, we offer parks rentals during peak seasons at several locations, and whether that's the entire park or, uh, you know, some of our smaller parks. We do, you know, rent the whole thing out, or one of the parks shelters within those park spaces. Um, we also have a financial assistance program, the assistance program, that we renamed it from scholarship to financial assistance. And we are working on accessible and accessibility and expansion of those funds to people who need them in the community. And we also have a robust, um, volunteer program, I think I mentioned in a presentation before, we had around five hundred volunteers. Um, in the past year that worked in the parks and recreation side of our operation. Um, so Lacey Parks consists of one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine acres. Twenty-six developed parks and trails and thirty-five parks properties total. Uh, on these properties are various trails and amenities such as sports fields, uh, tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts. We have a youth fishing dock, um, a junior level disc golf course, and a skate park. Um, and as I had said in the last presentation, and I think Jamie highlighted as well, Lacey Parks. System is thirty-five percent developed, leaving many opportunities, um, to give folks, you know, access to their parks. So let me orient you to this map, uh, here, the green shows Lacey Parks, um, the gray areas around the parks is the point five mile or the ten minute. Travel shed that we talked about through the comp plan update, um, the yellow background is the Lacey city boundary, and the orange background is the urban growth area. So let's talk about these circles, the red circles show undeveloped parks properties that need some type of improvements in order for the public to access them. Or access them fully, so we've got North Meridian Campus Park, there in the far northeast, which is one hundred percent undeveloped. Um, and then on over to Great Kyo Park, as you know, pha- phase one A development is in the works, um, but there are future needs with this. Uh, all this very huge space, um, on down to the rack phase three that we already talked about, and then to McAllister Park. Which is also a hundred percent undeveloped, um, the blue circles indicate partially developed parks properties. Uh, that are actually accessible to the public, but they're not finished, um, for example, Meridian Park. In the northeast, uh, Lacey area still needs sports fields, like we talked about before, additional parking and additional amenities. And then on over west to Pleasant Clay Park, uh, which is adjacent to Great Kyo, there's currently an entrance and a picnic table, but no practical trail for folks to use. And no parking, um, on down to Brooks Park, this is a very lovely patch of grass, but it is just that. A patch of grass, um, it's in one of Lacey's lowest income areas.
Hey Jen, Meridian's got room for a baseball field and a soccer field.
What's that, Meridian? Um, yes, so Meridian has space for. Yeah, there's two, two soccer fields, and then there's an overlay of two youth baseball fields. Um, then on down to Wanters Park, which is, you know, a wonderful space for the public, but also an unfinished park site. Um, and then here we have Long Lake Park, which is in need of beach improvements and also the adjacent property that, um, the city was able to. Purchase and add to the park system, it still needs access to that side of the park. Uh, and so it's easy, also this map indicates that that park desert here up in the north, um. North and middle, uh, part of Lacey, uh, really accentuating the need for the maximum public access and utilization of the parks. That are closest to that, um, area of Lacey. And so I know I speak for all of the Lacey Parks, uh, Culture Recreation staff when I say that I'm very grateful for the work that. Public Works Parks Maintenance Staff, um, takes care of and their stewardship really of Lacey's parks and facilities. So Parks Maintenance has twenty-two FTEs, um, and additional part-time seasonal staff over that. And they, uh, work very hard to serve the community every day out there. A quick note, the twenty-two FTE includes the rapid response team and the right-of-way work that takes place, but there's, there's overlap between FTEs. So just wanted to make sure and note that, um, this slide shows the Parks Maintenance Labor by Task. And I wanna point out, um, these are the tasks that make up most of the work physically in the parks, but not all of the work that our parks employees do, so. But you can see that janitorial and park cleanup is at the top of the list there with thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine hours per year. Spent doing that and then turf maintenance, um, just over five thousand hours and tree maintenance and on down. Um, so the total labor, uh, hours physically in the parks is the thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-six hours.
Jen, tho- those employees that do that work are public works employees, then they're not parks, they're public.
Right. The, uh, Public Works Park, Parks Maintenance is one of the six legs, if you will, of the, um. Operations at the shop, over at the maintenance shop.
How many FTD, FTE, what'd you say?
Twenty-two.
Thirty-two, three sixty-six.
You can't take that straight to FTE.
Parks is not overall their entire job, I'm sure.
Yeah, these are the physical tasks in the parks, so it doesn't include, yeah, just like.
Rapping out the math.
We have a right-of-way landscape management team that maintains all the street trees, all the arterial landscapes, all the median roundabouts that are housed under Parks Maintenance. But they don't physically work in parks, and then our rap- and our rapid response team also is under the parks umbrella. But they don't work in parks either, so that's just, that's, that's.
There's something that needs to be removed.
In the physical parks themselves.
Got it.
Yeah, we have called rapid response team.
Correct, correct, they do work in parks. The point is, Parks Maintenance is bigger than just parks.
Right, it's a lot of hours.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it says something about our, our city that we have less than a hundred hours of vandalism and graffiti removal as well, I think that's actually pretty impressive, it's pretty cool. Very cool.
So the current conditions of parks, um, is that we do have many wonderful facilities and amenities, um, they are, a lot of them are also in need of upkeep. Uh, we're faced with aging infrastructure and a growing population, uh, and while we're, you know, doing our best to maintain. Uh, and while we're, you know, doing our best to maintain current services, it's most definitely a challenge. Um, in two thousand and two, uh, a Parks Bond funded the construction of many parks and playgrounds. Throughout Lacey, these playgrounds are aging, um, a lot of them are out of the manufacturer's warranty, which is fifteen years typically, um, and will need to be replaced pretty soon. So in addition to funding the playground replacement costs, um, ongoing repairs are a significant challenge. So there are thirteen parks, uh, with playgrounds, only two are new enough to remain under warranty. Uh, the remaining eleven playgrounds are between fifteen and twenty-nine years old. Um, so just an example for your reference, the playground repairs at the Rack in two thousand and twenty-three were eighteen thousand dollars, um, because they are past the warranty and often it's a safety issue um, and use issue, um, so we need to replace those. And you already know this, but Lacey has experienced thirty-three percent growth in the last ten years and then eighty percent growth in the last twenty years. The late, and the last major investment in parks was that two thousand and two Parks Bond. And so you can see that, um, here we are, you know, twenty-four years later. Troy is gonna take the next couple of slides.
Okay, very similar setup as the Rack conversation, just want to give the council some background on the finances of our parks operations. Uh, three different areas, we've already gone over the Rack in detail. Um, we also have community buildings set up as a separate fund to track those, uh, revenues and costs. And then we have Parks Culture Recreation, which also includes maintenance. So on the, uh, the left column there, you see the operations and maintenance. Um, you know, like Jamie said, we have about seven hundred thousand, I think, in right-of-way. So every time, I mean, we, Jamie's got a touch out there, split between two growing areas. Every time we had a roundabout, every time a new development goes in and trees go in, that's a so, a bigger burden on Jamie's staff. On the revenue side, uh, you know, kind of similar to the Rack, I mean, again, you have the Rack in the middle there. Uh, community buildings is a subsidized function. Uh, we trans, in two thousand and twenty-three, we transferred about four hundred thousand of property tax into this fund to, uh, make sure we can maintain those facilities. Under the Parks Culture Recreation, in terms of program fees, we have about seven hundred and fifteen thousand. And the five hundred and thirty-six thousand, that's actually what we charge the utilities and the street fund for those right-of-way, um, maintenance costs. So we bring in money from some of our other funds and other functions. I really want to put just the two side by side. Uh, again, this is a very highly subsidized function for the city. Obviously, it's important, um, it's one of the reasons I think a lot of us live here. It's because of the great park system and what it does for families and our community. But, um, you could see that in terms of Parks Culture Recreation, uh, it's about six point six million, we only bring in about one point three. And that's almost all recreation fees. We don't charge, uh, community members to go to our parks. Um, the Rack, um, you know, you could see that, you know, I mentioned that, uh, the athletic portion of the Rack had about two hundred thousand or so of increase, that's why you're seeing, um, additional revenues there. Uh, community buildings, we actually dipped into our reserves, we had a, a few major repairs. Um, we invested about, about a hundred and sixty thousand into the childcare center. Uh, we had some siding and a patio cover repair. Um, we also did some work on the doors at the community center, so we invested some of our reserves into those, uh, functions and improvements, the H VAC too, didn't we?
We did.
Uh, well, two years ago.
Yeah.
Yes, buddy.
Yep. All right, thanks Troy. Um, so, uh, here I wanted to discuss the, um, we get into the meeting, the community needs, and I want to start with the why. So in two thousand and twenty, um, council directed, uh, Lacey Parks Culture Recreation to conduct extensive outreach, um, and communication with the public in order to close some communication gaps, um, that might exist regarding priorities. And also to inform the comprehensive plan update. Um, so with guidance from a consultant and involvement from our staff, um, from the Parks Board and a special Parks Outreach Team, um, made up of community members, Lacey Parks engaged in a two-year public outreach and engagement process during two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, moving on to the what, um, the Parks Capital Improvement Plan came from the input. And then of course, add the known ma- maintenance needs, um, to sustain services. And so we're now needing council's help with the how, um, which is why we'll be asking, as Rick mentioned, um, today to consider a formation of an ad hoc advisory committee called Parks Improvement Work Group, um, to help figure out the how. So this is the, the P C I P, the Parks Capital Improvement Program, which is part of that comp plan, like I said. Um, this is a six-year list of capital projects and major replacements. Um, we're going, we separated those out into two slides. So the first one is new capital projects. And as councils are aware, projects move up in priority based on funding opportunities. So, you know, there's no, um, possible way that we'll get through this, all of the projects on here, particularly because of the price tag, but also because of capacity and just different funding opportunities and grants that become available. Um, and so the, what I wanted to point out here is that the ones that already have funding, that, that are funded in the budget have a green check mark. And on the left, and then the cost estimates are not included in this total here. Few things to note that are included, and I realize there's a lot going on in this slide, um, but the, some key takeaways from the public outreach as identified in the comp plan. So Gray Cuyo Park next phase, um, is gonna be included in here. And that would be the work that would finish phase one. I think the question came up recently, what about restrooms for that site? So that would be, you know, something that would complete, um, phase one, as you know, phase one A is in progress. Um, but this project speaks to the need for access to trails and other, um, requested amenities that we learned through the master planning for the Gray Cuyo Park and Greenways Master Plan. And then you'll also see four spray parks, um, on here, also known as splash pads. And that's speaking to the need for outdoor water opportunities that community expressed. Um, there's also the pool and indoor playground partnership project that's on this list. And that's referring to the recreational components of the Young Child and Family Center. Um, and that speaks to the indoor recreation needs of the community. Uh, and has a placeholder, there is a placeholder for that line item of five million dollars. Um, which, you know, is something that bears more dis- uh, the need for more discussion, but wanted to make sure I include that in here. Uh, in addition, you'll see Meridian Parks, uh, Meridian Park Sports Fields and other improvements. Um, and that speaks to the need for finishing the sports fields that the city had, has had planned, um, from our, from our outreach. Other significant prog- projects on the list include Long Lake Park Development, the Virgil S. Clarkson, Clarkson Senior Center Phase Three Development, and the newly Lacey Museum and Cultural Center.
What is the phase three on the senior center?
Phase three is additional space, so there, they have been outgrowing that space for a number.
Five, ten, fifteen.
And then a pack of long expansion off to the east side, towards the east.
Yeah, so when the, um, there was one expansion that has already been done in two thousand and thirteen and, uh, during that process, there was a phase three also in a concept design.
And this is that same, this three, we just haven't got there yet.
Correct.
It was, it was fully, fully.
Over, overflowed by.
Immediately when we built phase two, because some of us were here for that. It was a big deal, but it was already too small as soon as we built it.
Um, so then you'll see over here on the side, the potential partnerships tab over here. So at the time the comp plan was approved, we had included a one million dollar placeholder for a baseball championship field partnership and a one mil- million dollar placeholder to be able to potentially contribute to an indoor sports facility, some type of press, uh, partnership. These two items are included in the city council work plan, um, and so staff has been working, you know, to form the partnerships for those. Um, but as you can see, it's quite the total here coming in at almost sixty million dollars, plus approximately two point five million dollars in the added maintenance and operations that would be needed. And then we move to the replacements. These are the replacement capital projects, again, the ones that have funding in the current budget have the checkmark, um, and are not included in the total. So there's replacements listed here, but I, uh, we also, um, and just totaling just under seven million dollars. But we also want to share, um, that there are major repairs on the horizon additionally. The, um, current P C I P goes through two thousand and twenty-nine, but, but take the six years following that time period. And there will be approximately eight million dollars in playground replacement costs and another two million with smaller replacement items needed such as sidewalks and trails, um, picnic shelter replacement, sports court resurfacing, and then replacement of aging amenities like picnic tables, benches, and garbage cans.
It's a lot of money.
So, yep, it is. And the comprehensive, just to quote, um, the comprehensive plan, all of the projects will require public funding. So serious consideration must be given to establishing dedicated Parks Culture and Recreation Funds.
And just kind of add on to that, as, as Jen alluded to, is once you build it and you got to maintain it annually, but, you know, like we just experienced with the last bond of twenty.
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two, that, that equipment now needs to be updated and replaced, so it's an ongoing process. It doesn't, it, it's gonna be constant, either replacement, maintenance, or, or expansion.
Well, I'm gonna pull what Troy said in our joint meeting with the school board, sixty million can be hard to find. Right? Even if we M P D'd this at fifty cents, we wouldn't make it in that horizon.
Well, don't forget, we went to the public for an M P D once before and they said no.
Right, filled by seven hundred votes.
Field.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that conversation a little bit later in terms of funding sources, but we just want to really emphasize that there are some challenges to maintain the parks that our community likes, as Troy mentioned in the beginning, that is one of the reasons why we all live here is, is the great parks and activities. But again, we gotta continue that sustainable funding in order to keep up that, that experience.
And on that note, what, what can we afford with current revenue sources? We know that the current general fund revenues don't have the capacity for capital expansion, um, that operating revenues can't fill the gap and that reserves are limited. And so we have a slide here that shows, uh, viable funding options available to the city. And so, uh, you'll see the, so we'll run through these quickly, but of course, if there's questions that impact fees is, you'll see a strike through because we don't currently have an ordinance that allows parks impact fees in Lacey. Um, and the, uh, and then there are sponsorships and donations, which are, can be unpredictable and unsustainable. Um, not that we don't appreciate that, of course, and same with, with grants, R C O grants, C V G, et cetera. Super appreciate the funding and they do help a lot with the capital, but they don't cover M and O.
Um, we don't currently have an ordinance that allows impact fees. We pass ordinances all the time. So do we have legislative authority to create an ordinance that will allow us to levy impact fees on developers?
There is under eighty-two oh-two, it's, uh, impact fees on, um, um, for, for transportation, parks, fire, and, uh, uh, there's one more, but I can't see what that might. But the, one of the challenges we have with that, what we currently track, uh, collect our traffic impact fees under a different statute, um, the transportation program. The challenge with doing impact fees is it's, it's, you're, you're collecting on, um, each residential unit and, and it's at the building permit stage. And you have to spend that money within a si- six-year timeframe or else you would give it back. And so it's always difficult to accrue enough prop, uh, money to provide, um, acquisition or, or capital improvements because you're always kind of built the account while you're, while you're looking at the collection piece.
But if we had an account that was collecting impact fees, it wouldn't have to fully fund a project, it could contribute to a funding strategy for a project. So it could be impact fees and other sorts of funding.
As long as you're able to tie it to the, the, uh, uh, nexus to the impact identified, you could spin it for the design and/or construction. The other piece of it is, is we'd probably been a lot more advantageous if we had that ordinance in place in the mid-nineties with all the, um, development that's accrued since then. And now our digital activities is gonna be changing.
Second best time to plant a tree is today.
Yes, I know, I know, but, uh, you're, and also too, you have the, it's a, it's a public process, you're gonna have, um, you know, public engagement, so it's gonna be a lot. Yes, we do pass ordinances all the time, but it would take some time to go through that process and get.
Also, one of the things that makes us a desirable place to develop is the fact that we don't, that other places don't have.
So the, the quick answer to the question, yes, anything, you can do this, but there are processes and steps and, and, and.
So it's public streets and roads, publicly owned parks, open space and recreational facilities, school facilities and fire protection facilities, those are the.
Well, schools, those are the ones.
Schools is the one I think that you're trying to remember.
I, I believe if you value education, you're gonna invest in it. And I think if you value, uh, active, uh, community, a healthy community, healthy lifestyle, that you're gonna value that as well. If not, then we just pull back, you know? I mean, the, the grants are, are fine and they'll, they'll do their job here and there. Um, you'll, you'll have occasional person that donates, you know, um, estates, oh, stuff like that. But if you want to have the community you want to have and all the fine things that go along with your, the lifestyle that you live, then that comes in a cost and, and, um, I, I believe it's, you know, you ask, you ask the voters and they say yay or they say no, but nay, and then you, you can pull back or you push forward.
I'm sure you have a proposal.
Um, so I, I just wanted to point out a couple more things and then Troy's got some more information for us. Um, uh, the regardless of program vendor and rental fees, um, we use those to cover direct costs to keep, you know, programs affordable to the public. Um, we talked about general fund, you know, of course, um, can be used for all these different things, but it's, it's, there's no capacity there. Lodging tax, um, can be unpredictable, um, general allocation bond, uh, G O bonds. This is what was used last for the two thousand and two major investment, um. And the one thing to point out here is that M and O is not an allowable use of that. Metropolitan Park Districts have, um, maximum flexibility, so they can be used for capital or M and O. They're the most versatile, um, public facilities districts can be the most versatile, um, but they do require the regional partnership, as you know. And, uh, most, and some of them, uh, the ones that are perpetual out of this list are the M P D and the P F D can be depending on the way, uh, depending on R C W. So there are some P F Ds that are restricted to a certain time and there are some that are, uh, ongoing. So, but most of these fund types are subject to annual approval, so, um, that's just information that we're sharing. And then I'll turn it back over to Troy.
Okay, so I want to provide some information focusing on unapproved debt. Well, we do count some analytic debt, but as you know, we don't have the capacity to pay that debt without additional property tax levies. And also touch on, uh, the Metropolitan Park District in terms of what that might raise. So these, sorry, this is a bit of a busy slide, so trying to accomplish two things at once. Um, so what we have is, across the bottom is the, uh, amount of bond money we could raise, so, um, I, I stopped at forty million. Uh, the green, uh, bars are the annual debt service. So as an example, under the forty million dollar scenario, it'd be just under three million dollars per year. Uh, this is a twenty-year term versus the fifteen-year term you saw from the Rack, uh, P F D, uh, scenario. And then the red line is the impact on a typical house in Lacey. And last year that was five hundred thousand was a typical home. So again, using the forty million dollar scenario, um, that debt service would require on a hundred and twenty-one dollars per five hundred thousand, our house in Lacey. I'm sorry?
Anyone?
Yes, uh, I used four percent, I believe, in terms of the, the interest rate.
So ten, ten percent.
Ten percent. For house, for family, for evidence, for.
Um, switching over to.
Are you gonna show our levy in comparison to?
I am.
Right now.
So, uh, switching gears and talking about Metropolitan Park Districts, uh, did want to show what our neighbors are doing. We are the only major city in Thurston County that is not levying a M P D at this point. Uh, the two thousand and twenty-four rate for lepia is just over fifty cents. Uh, Tom Waters' levy rate is just under thirty-three cents per thousand. So, um, the statutory maximum for, uh, Metropolitan Park District is seventy-five cents. So you have that at the far right, and then I just hit twenty-five cent increments going towards the left in terms of what it will generate on an annual basis. Uh, this is based on this year's assessed valuation of just over twelve billion. Uh, so it's basically twelve billion divided by a thousand times increments, seventy-five cents or fifty or twenty-five cents. Uh, so it's basically twelve billion divided by a thousand times increments, seventy-five cents or fifty or twenty-five cents. Um, so you see seventy-five cents, twelve billion would generate just over nine million dollars per year. Um, I will note that um in terms of. The junior tax district, district status that this would have, uh, this would be one of the first. Levis, it's reduced if we start to approach our statutory limit. Um, and for us, essentially, it's a dollar sixty per thousand. Uh, that would include the city's levy, fire district and library. And as you know, the fire district is at that, there's that trade limit of a dollar fifty. I think the library district's right around forty cents and their statute limit is fifty cents. So all the capacity would have to come out of the city's remaining uh share there. So, um, again, showing the impacts on a five hundred thousand dollar home in Lacey. Um, if we had a seventy-five cent per thousand levy, that would be uh three hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. Fifty cents would be two fifty, twenty-five cents would be uh a dollar twenty-five. So I did wanna show just a side-by-side comparison with uh. The Metropolitan Park District levies in the region as well as the general levy. Um, you could see that uh for Olympia and Tom Water, their Metropolitan Park District levy is, is. You know, a small percentage of their, their general levy. Um, for Lacey, our two thousand twenty-four certified levy is just under, or just under seventy-five cents per thousand. So I really just kinda wanna show that for perspective, if we did, the Metropolitan Park District is seventy-five cents, it would actually be bigger than our general levy. Which funds everything else in the city. Well, actually, it doesn't fund everything else in the city, but it's, it's one source to fund.
So when, what year was it that we went out for the M P D? Was it two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, and so that would have been eight years ago. So eight years, if we would have had three, so okay, six years, yeah. So say, times three, that we would have eighteen million dollars and we'd have all the cash we needed and that project would be. If, if it would have passed, I'm just saying, we'd have eighteen million dollars. And that project would have been funded and built and running, up and running already.
Our levy rate that we went to voters with was forty-seven cents per thousand. I think we were only projecting it. Four million per year, so we would have never gone to seventy-five cents because of the one percent limit. Actually applies to the Metropolitan Park District levy as well, so.
If we would have went for a quarter, twenty-five cents like this says.
So if we did it at the fifty cent level. Um, what would our, our bond capacity potentially be?
We'd double that, so it'd be six million dollars.
Well, depending on, you know, if the council, you know, based on the straw poll of roughly fifty cents for capital, fifty cents for uh. Ongoing M and O, that'd be three million. Um, I'm gonna cheat a little bit, so three million would be forty million, so, yeah.
How often do you have to, you have to levy? Or do you?
You don't have to for the Metropolitan Park District uh levy, but. What is typically going, typically going to happen is that levy rate is going to go down because of the one percent limit. So I'm not going to say it's going to go down to zero, but it's, it's the, it's what you're seeing with the fire district. So they go to the voters, they get a dollar fifty approved, and then it slowly goes down, they come back and they ask to lift it to a dollar fifty again, so it'd be. It could be something similar to that for Lacey, and it's really again depend on what assessed valuation does as well.
Um, it's not predictable every five years, it's based on property valuations.
Correct, yeah.
But you can put a sunset on it, correct?
I don't know, I.
We do twenty-five year sunset where it expires or. I'm almost positive you can't.
Yeah, it'd be really depending on the, the ballot title. We have to watch out that two-topic issue uh too, so. But yeah, it's something we could look and do though.
What did we pay last time when we put this on the ballot?
A hundred and fifteen thousand?
Mm-mm, no, it went in the fall, it was like nine thousand or ten thousand.
Oh, yeah, we went to the November election. So, yeah. Special elections, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Cause you're in it by yourself.
So ultimately, we did, you know, we're kind of, oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna look through the council direction.
Oh, there you go.
Also, if you wanted. That's where you were going, okay, um. Yeah, so the next step is council direction to um support the establishment of a Parks Improvement Funding Work Group, and this would. Uh, would come to council um with a formal, uh, excuse me, a future resolution to form a committee. To identify priority improvements, identify associated costs, and then identify a funding strategy and make a recommendation to council. So if that's, um, you know, there's no official action tonight, but if that's a direction council would like us to go.
It would all depend with me on what kind of community members would be a part of this.
Well, that's, that's part of the, the, this uh Pub Parks Improvement Funding. Work group would need to be a combination of uh, community members, stakeholders. A, a, a broad group to look at this issue, kind of go out and do some engagement. And, and work through the next several months uh to develop uh some recommendations they could bring back to council. On one, what should be those park cards that best benefit the, all of the community, and if you go back to the map that Jen showed of the various. Develop, undeveloped and, and partially developed parks. You also probably notice that there's an area that doesn't have a lot of, of service right now that's had, received a lot of growth in the, in the last ten, fifteen years. So how do we make sure we, you know, uh, provide amenities for not only all the community, but geographically dispersed too?
These would be appointments?
These would be uh, uh, appointments uh, uh, that uh, you know, the council would make to form the committee. We wanna see it, um, we'd wanna do it by resolution, so they have a specific pass, so there's no confusion what their, their focus is. And then probably a, a report back date so that there's, the committee would be disbanded once they deliver their recommendation.
And if they're already on another committee?
Huh?
And if they're already in the committee?
That, I think you can get uh some other representation on something, advisory board as well as community members, you can, you can, you know. Develop both over the committee that can do that heavy work.
Please.
So my only, I have no problem with forming a committee. Um, the makeup of that committee is very important though. You know, in the past, uh, when we did the committee for uh homelessness, if you may recall, we actually had. Significant input into that committee. In most of the committees that we assign, we don't. The mayor appoints him, we approve his appointments. I'm not comfortable with that for this type of a committee. I think we need a broad, broad range, and I think that unless we have very direct input into who's on that committee, I would not support it.
Last time we had a pretty good cross-section and we tried to make sure that the city was represented as a whole and we took. From all different sections and made sure that no neighborhood got missed. Um, I would be in favor of something like that.
Point, point of view too, I mean, you get too many people that have too much of a vested interest. You're gonna, you, you can predetermine what they're gonna come back with, right? We need input, we need a broad input on this. Remember, we did bring this to the voters once and they said no.
Right, what kind of horizon are we talking about on this?
Well, we were, depending on, uh, well, the formation of committee, um. Will take some time, but we're, we're gonna potentially, if the council wanna go that direction, bring a resolution to the May seventh meeting. Um, one of the things I want to, uh, you know, caution to is size of the committee. Um, because if you have too big of a committee, it can be very.
Totally agree.
You wanna have people coming and going, not attending every meeting, we wanna make sure we, whoever's appointed is a broad cross-section that represents. The, the broader community, the citizen interest as well as the stakeholder user interest too. And so, um, I wanna try to figure out what the size of that would be and then have clear direction on what their, their, their purpose is.
I know this is very preliminary and you're asking for direction, but do you have a conceptual timeline? For when this committee might convene and then produce a recommendation?
Would I, I would, in order to keep up the timeline of where we want to uh continue to, to move forward with the potential ballot measure, we wanna have the committee start meeting. Sometime in mid-June, early July and having the recommendations coming out sometime in um. This fall, October, November. For council to take.
When was the last one put before voters?
Twenty eighteen, and in that scenario, that was, we had a couple of different conversations going on between parks needs and Coolio Park as well as indoor sports facility. And it was conversation, if I remember right, in late spring, with an idea to go to the general ballot, so it wasn't much time and there wasn't any really committee work. It would, um, it was a, and there needs to be some groundwork. If, if, if it comes out the recommendation is to uh. Look at some voter-approved funding options. There's gonna need some groundwork to put that onto the ballot in order for the community to have the information they need to make a informed decision.
That's just my thought was the kind of going on, if we're gonna put it before the voters, I think we should have a reasonable expectation that it should pass. The only way to do that is to have people who um. Who see it from all sides and, and can, can support it and maybe go back and look at some reasons why the last one got. Uh, cause I'd just be interested to know if it lost by that much, what were the reasons why it got turned down or something?
Lost by seven hundred votes, it's grown by ten thousand people since then.
And I think that's why the council had asked us to do that work, close those communication gaps and find, get more information.
And we might be crushed for time, because if you think about, we wanna try to, uh, facilitate the form of the committee, but you're also. Application process is gonna take a certain amount of time, if you who's interested, and then that application to be reviewed by the council. And then open for the formal appointments as well, so. There could be some time and even forming and, and establishing a community too.
Well, I think we wanna move this on to the full council. Um, it sounds like we're kind of in agreement, but I think it, it also sounds like we wanna keep a close eye on how this develops. Because um, this is. Well, it's gonna determine a lot, so, um, are you guys in favor of moving this on to the full council?
Yeah, yes.
Right, there you have your answer.
We look forward to uh more conversations, that's.
Okay, well. There, it appears as though that brings us to the end of our agenda. Um, we, we covered a lot. And uh, some of it seemed like it was, you know, brought to us in a very, you know. We gotta make a decision tonight kind of way. Um, I, there's, there's some stuff that I, I felt like I really wanna chew on a little bit longer, so. Um, I definitely would like some uh additional lead time on some of this stuff uh in the future, so. Um, I, I hope we can, we can all, you know, agree on what should be, what should happen on the, the Silicon Marvin Root parcel. Um, I, I feel like it still needs a little bit more discussion, and it looks like we're running out of time on that, so. So, um, I, I have no doubt that, um, you know, since we're off next Tuesday. Um, that the following week, we will, will. Most likely end up continuing discussing uh that agenda item. Uh, but I, I have no doubt that, that um, we, we've gotta do something with that parcel and. We're, we're sitting on gold and we just have yet to turn it, to dig it out of the ground. So, um, as we have reached the end of our, our agenda, um, if there's no objection, then I will call this meeting adjourned.